entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions? Seeing none, all of this in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. At this time, we have a few proclamations we want to read. The first one is to recognize a county employee, Mr. Lee Outen, for his many, many years of service to Wycomico County Public Works Department. Councilman Jeff Merritt will be presenting this. I think, Lee, I think he's out in the hallway. There he is, there he is.
Good one, bro. All right, man. Good to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah? And thank you.
I'm going to fix it in, Colin.
Well, you know, we can fix that.
Yeah.
Right? All right, so this is a certificate of appreciation for Lee Outen for his 25 and a half years of service to Wycomico County. It is with great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council extend this certificate of appreciation to Lee Outen for your 25 and a half years of service to the Wycomico County Public Works Department, including 13 years as Superintendent of Roads. On behalf of the citizens of Wycomico County and the Wycomico County Council, we extend our appreciation and gratitude for your 25 and a half years of service done the 7th day of May, 2024, signed by all members of the County Council. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't write a speech or anything. Yeah, no, I didn't write one, but it's been a great time at Wycomico County. I've met so many great people, so many fantastic employees, so many great citizens. I've learned a lot, and I'm going to take some of that experience moving forward. I'm going to look forward to next winter when I can be like some of my weirdo friends and hope for snow, because I'll be able to sit home and not worry about it. And on days like this, when all this rain, usually something happens, so I feel bad for those guys over there at roads right now. They're probably going to have to do something tonight, some way or another, so... But thank you, everybody. It's been great, and I'm sure you'll see me around.
Hey, Lee, a little bit of karaoke?
I can do that, too. That's how I make some money.
So there's 700 miles of road in our county, and this man knows every square inch of them. Literally.
He's also a member of the Fruitland City Council, a past president of the City Council as well.
Yep, still there, so.
Very good.
All right.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize Ramonia White, the County Assistant, as a 2023 Employee of the Year for the Wycomico County Department of Corrections. Councilman James Wynn will be presenting this.
Teacher, Employee of the Year, huh? Okay, so this is a proclamation for Ramonia White, Employee of the Year for 2023 Wycomico County Department of Corrections. Whereas Ms. Ramonia White began her career at the Wycomico County Detention Center as a correctional clerk accounts payable in July 2002. She quickly learned all aspects of being a correctional clerk and later was honored as the Department Accounting Assistant. And whereas Ms. White performs her duties flawlessly and takes the responsibilities of handling the accounting business very serious. She is very thorough and efficient in her performance and how she serves the county and ensures documentation is accurate, detailed, and completed in a timely manner. And whereas Ms. White is the driving force of the Employee Incentive Committee and has taken the lead to represent her fellow employees, her involvement, including the planning, coordination, and implementation of events for the staff. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby congratulates Ramonia White for being selected as the 2023 Employee of the Year for the Wycomico County Department of Corrections, and thanks Ms. White for her service to the community. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. It's good to be appreciated for that people see what you do and you're out there doing it for your fellow workers. And it's just, I enjoy doing it, so it's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Yeah, pictures of it didn't happen. Next, we want to recognize with the proclamation for Craig Moore, Correctional Officer II, as the 2023 Correctional Officer of the Year for Wycomico County Department of Corrections. Be presented by Councilman Josh Hastings. There he is.
Remind me not to get on your bad side. We're happy to give, recognize Craig Moore, Correctional Officer of the Year 2023. Whereas Officer Craig Moore began his career with the Wycomico County Department of Corrections as a correctional officer in February 2020. And after graduating from the Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy and quickly learned all aspects of being a correctional officer, he was promoted to the rank of Correctional Officer II in 2021. Whereas Officer Moore has been assigned to every operational post in the facility, performing duties in a high professional manner with an obvious commitment to excellence in all endeavors. On more than one occasion, he has been recognized for his performance and how he continues to serve the county. His thoroughness has resulted in detection, confiscation, confisc... That's a hard word. Confiscation. I'm dyslexic, seriously. There you go. There you go. Confiscation, why is that a hard word? Of dangerous contraband, good work. Whereas Officer Moore remains humble and committed to his duty as correctional officer, exemplifying the importance of dedication and hard work. His seamless ability to integrate his professional and personal lives is a testament to his passion and determination. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby congratulates Correctional Officer II Craig Miller for being selected as the 2023 Wycomico County Correctional Officer of the Year, and thanks Officer Moore for his incredible service to our community done the 7th day of May, 2024. Congratulations.
I'd just like to say thank you to administration. My Lieutenant Preston, he's the best lieutenant in the building. And I thank the County Council. Thank you all.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize May 10th as National Child Care Provider Day. Rosalie Meriwether with the Eastern Shore Child Care Resource Center at Salisbury University is here, presented by Councilwoman Shaney Shields. Correct? There you are. If you'll stand over behind Shaney, she has her own personal podium.
I know childcare is very important to working mothers and families. So it gives me a great pressure, pleasure to recognize National Child Care Provider Day. Whereas the family childcare is quality early childhood education and a valuable investment in our children's future. Childcare professionals play an important role in cultivating, supporting, and educating young children in a warm, loving, and culturally competent environment to meet the needs of families. And whereas childcare providers are recognized as essential workforce for our economy that allows families access to the care needed so they can work. And whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experience provided to young children today. And support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims May 10th, 2024, as a National Child Care Provider Day and call upon all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work done this 7th day of May, 2024. And it's from the Wycomico County, and everyone signed.
Just wanted to start by saying I feel privileged to follow Lee. Lee was one of the very first parents that I ever worked with in childcare. And it was a wonderful experience to work with Lee. Less than one-third of children in America have a full-time stay-at-home parent. Childcare is not just about children and families, but it's about a thriving community and a workforce that is essentially sustainable. Eastern Shore childcare strives to ensure quality childcare here in Wycomico County. On behalf of Eastern Shore Child Care Resource Center and the childcare community of Wycomico County, I'd like to thank you so much for recognizing May 10th, 2024 as Child Care Provider Day.
We have one final proclamation to recognize National Correctional Officers Week as a whole as May 5th through the 11th, 2024. Chris Tyler, our Director of the Department of Corrections, will be here to accept it. And Councilman Shane Baker will be presenting the proclamation.
Come on up here, best lieutenant in the building. Come on up here.
You line up on both sides of that podium so we can get everybody in.
We just emptied out half the gallery.
Come on up here, best lieutenant. So this is a proclamation for National Correctional Officers Week. Whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of inmates. And their position is essential to a day-to-day operations of correctional facilities. And whereas the duty of a correctional officers are increasingly complex and demanding, and the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by correctional officers deserves the utmost respect. And whereas the important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition it deserves, and it is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these many women who are vital components in the field of corrections. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024 as National Correctional Officers Week and call upon all citizens to observe this week in recognition of all correctional officers. So a long, long time ago, from 1995 to 99, I got the pleasure of working with now Deputy Director Jameson. And those were good times, and I'm sure he's still having good times there. Sounds like it, anyway. So, you want to say anything?
Mr. President, council members, the staff of Wycomico County Department of Corrections thank you for this recognition as well as your continued support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, we got to squeeze in.
Tighten up.
No bunny ears. You guys can stay if you'd like. No takers.
I don't blame you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM. The proposed fiscal year 2025 budget is posted on the county's website, and a summary is displayed on the screen behind me. I also have copies of the presentation on the table as you walk in showing the departmental request for fiscal year 25. The county executive has submitted to the county council, as required by the charter, a balanced budget. She proposes a budget funded by many revenue sources, the principle of which is your local property taxes, followed by your local income taxes. In looking at the expenditures for the operating budget, I will review one page at a time, as shown in the handout, after I am finished reading each fund number and title on the page. If anyone has anything they would like to say in regards to any of the funds on that page, please go to the microphone and state your name, county of residence, and your comments. Historically, the majority of the public input has been with regards to the Board of Education's budget, so that will be read last. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and we will have a timer on the screen as well behind me. And if you could please try not to repeat what other speakers have already stated.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor. No?
We're going to read one page at a time.
At this time, we open the floor for the public hearing on the fiscal year 25 operating and capital budget. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, so starting with Fund One, we have the county council at $995,861. Circuit Court is Fund O2 at $2,369,052. Orphans Court, $94,570. Fund O4, State's Attorney, at $5,414,367. Fund O5, Executive/Administration, $837,447. Fund O6, Community Promotions, $44,000. If anyone has any comments regarding any of those funds, please go to the microphone and state your name, county of residence, and provide your comment. I don't see any. The next page, we have Fund Seven, Elections, at $2,440,287. Fund Eight, Finance, $1,940,164. Fund Nine, Public Accountant, $200,000. Fund Ten, Purchasing, $439,149. Fund Eleven, Law, $436,752. Fund Twelve, Human Resources, $915,298. If anyone has any comments regarding any of those funds, please go to the microphone.
Hello, Shannon Perdue from Parsonsburg, Maryland. I just wanted the county council to actually, when you go over the budget, the ones we just went through, to take note that we've got... Or, let me see, in finance, five of the 12 are getting increases between 14% and 16%. Across the board, Wycomico County got around a 5% raise. However, again, in finance, you're looking at 14.2% for some, 16.8%. And then when you get into human resources, again, some heavier numbers. You have 18% for the head of human resources. And then even into further, just would like to understand how you go from 5% across the board, for the most part, to some of them at 14%, 19%, 17%. That's definitely something that needs to be looked at. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. I've got at least 20 highlights of positions where the, it was excess of 10% to 20% of an increase of salary. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Continuing, we have Planning and Zoning, Fund 13, at $2,715,352. Fund 14, General Services, at $1,802,574. Fund 15, IT, that's $1,896,196. Fund 16, Liquor/L license board, $313,304. Fund 17, Sheriff's, that's $17,847,44. Fund 18, Salisbury Fire/Ambulance, $2 million. If there's any comments regarding those funds, please go to the podium. Seeing none. Fund 19 is Volunteer Ambulance, at $4,895,000. Fund 20 is Volunteer Fire, at $2,787,635. Fund 21, Corrections, $22,550,935. Fund 22, Emergency Services, $4,865,762. Fund 23, Protection of Animals, $593,205. Fund 24, Public Works, $1,205,169. If there's any comments regarding any of those funds, please go to the podium.
Shannon Perdue from Parsonsburg, again. Just wanted to bring to the county council's attention that the volunteer fire departments, the numbers stayed the same from last year to this year. There was no increase. And trust me, that slap in the face was heard, and the volunteer fire department community still hear it. Anything after the fact is still not going to be much better. And quite frankly, if we are offered any funds and then have to beg, borrow, and allocate, and tell people where we have to spend the money, that's also another slap in the face. Some fire departments have to spend their money on payroll. So for the county to tell us we can't spend funds that are giving to us on payroll is actually not fair to anybody. I just want you to know, the volunteer fire company sees that. And we see what was done, and we know where it lies, but we do see it and we feel it. And anything after the fact will be felt, and we know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perdue.
Good evening, Council. Holly Ortell, President of the Wycomico County Volunteer Fire Association. I saw the budget. I know that there's going to be some other options that we're going to be meeting with you tomorrow. I just hope that, for all the council members, that you hear us. We need to keep the lights on and the wheels turning to respond to the 911 calls. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, President Ortell.
Moving on, we have Fund 27, Mosquito Control, at $238,861. Fund 28, Gypsy Moth Control, $35,000. Fund 31, Community College, $7,052,000. Fund 32, Public Library, $2,9,424. Fund 33, Tri-County Council, $769,060. Fund 34, Public Health, $5,270,753. Fund 35, GOB Security, $111,600. Fund 36, Extension Service, $164,256. If there's any comments on those funds, please go to the podium. Seeing none. Next is Fund 37, Community Access Channel, that's $247,000. Fund 38, Office of Economic Development, $246,450. Fund 39, Police Accountability Board, $16,250. Fund 40, Pension and Retirement, $63,000. Fund 41, Hospital Disability and Death Benefit, $358,308. Fund 42, Workers' Compensation/Liberty Insurance, that's $1,400,000. Fund 43, County Debt Retirement, $6,350,000. Fund 45, Social Services, $3,567. Fund 46, Transfer to Other Funds and Contingency, that's $16,627,344. Fund 47, Fleet Vehicles Lease, $950,000. Are there any comments regarding those funds? Seeing none. Next is Fund 50, Roads, that's $13,490,606. Fund 60, Recreation and Parks, that's $3,730,825. Fund 83, Grants and Mandates, that's $476,210. Fund 84, Teen Adult Center Dub Point, $61,362. Fund 85, Maintenance of Aged and Community, that's $300,000. Fund 86, Commission on Aging, $750. Fund 87, Life Crisis Center, that's $13,500. Any comments regarding those funds? Okay, that concludes the funds that are for the general fund. That total is $198,850,862. Moving on to our governmental and enterprise funds, we have Fund 51, Solid Waste, at $15,100,900. Fund 52, Airport, at $5,32,691. Fund 53, Electrical Board, $44,100. Fund 54, Local Management Board, that's $1,843,696. Fund 60, Recreation and Parks, that's $6,417,600. Fund 60, Recreation and Parks, that's $6,417,693. We have Fund 61 and 64, Wycomico Youth and Civic Center, that's $7,200,477. Fund 62, Tourism, that's $3,469,71. Nursing Home, that's $10,652,600. And then finally, we have Board of Education, which is Fund 30, that's $59,586,953. If there's any comments regarding any of those funds, please go to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Gene Malone, Chairman of the Wycomico County Board of Education. The Board and our staff have been hard at work on the budget since last fall. This year poses several challenges, including the expiration of COVID-era federal grants, increasing enrollment, and inventory of 24 school buildings with an average age of 33 years. Despite these challenges, Wycomico County citizens have a lot to be proud of in their public school system. Our students continue to succeed in the classroom, athletic fields, and the community. This success is supported by the hard work of our over 3,000 employees. As we near the end of fiscal year 2024, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize and show appreciation to our county executive and county council's leadership in providing above-maintenance-of-effort funding for the school system this year. As we look ahead to fiscal year 2025, we are once again asking for above MOE funding, and it's important that we be transparent with the public as we make this request. In FY 2010, the Wycomico County government had revenue of nearly $125 million. Of that, nearly 41%, a little over 50 million, was allocated to the Board of Education for operating expenses. In our current year, county revenue has grown to over $193 million, but of this, only 26%, less than 50 million, was allocated to public schools. In short, since 2010, the county has seen a 59.1% increase in revenue, while the community's public school system has seen a net decrease of 2.2% in operating funds. That's right, the county's appropriation to our public schools was less in 2024 than 2010. If funding for FY 25 remains at maintenance-of-effort, the county allocation to the public school system will once again be below what was received in 2010 for the 15th consecutive year. In our February 8 public budget hearing, we shared that the cost of doing business for FY 25 shows an increase of approximately $4.1 million. This does not include new programming, instructional materials, or staff salaries. Superintendent Stoffler and staff shared that FY 25 requests a $4.1 million above-maintenance-of-effort with county leadership. This request would simply cover the increases in the cost of doing business. As a Board, we appreciate the hard work of our 3,000 employees, 15,000 students, and we look forward to continuing our collaboration with county government on the hard work required to make this request a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Malone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Stoffler. I'm Superintendent of Schools for Wycomico County. Maryland's school systems have seen an increase in state funding through the blueprint for Maryland's future. That is correct. But please know that these funds are very specific as to their purpose. The increase in funds have specifically had to go to additional state requirements and mandates that expand the scope of what public education is. These additional requirements include increases in mental health staff, special education staff, and resources, and staff to support English language learners, just to name a few. In 2010, we had 359 students learning English as a second language. Today, we have over 2,000 out of the same 15,000 population of students. That's a 456% increase. So while state funds help with meeting those needs, local funds do the rest. Local funds help determine our class sizes. Local funds help determine student discipline, school climate, and school safety. And they provide extracurricular activities such as sports, fine arts, and music. And local funds also help determine the environment that our students learn in each day. While state funds help shape the services we must provide and are mandated to provide, local funds really determine the educational experiences we are able to provide. In 2010, the county allocated $50.8 million to the school system, which was 41%, as Mr. Moen said, of the county's operating budget. That's $3,624 per student. And despite the $800,000 over maintenance-of-effort this year and above-maintenance-of-effort support on two other occasions, the county allocated $49.9 million in 2024, which is about $3,514 per student. You'll see a $700,000 increase for '25 in the budget. That's only because we have 200 more students in the school system. It's still $3,514 per student. So I want to make it clear that this is not the fault of the administration or the county, but I ask that the current elected leaders do need to be a part of the long-term solution. That is why, as far as FY 25 funding, our request of the county is $4.1 million over maintenance-of-effort, which is a request that is simply based off of the inflation that we experienced this past year. These areas include insurance cost increases, higher costs for utilities, and escalation in technology costs, fuel prices, and transportation cost increases. This would allow us to at least maintain what we are doing and not continue to fall further behind. By not going above maintenance-of-effort another year, please know this ultimately means a decrease for next year in every single one of those areas that I mentioned before. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Wright, and I live in Hebron. And you're getting a little handout of some graphs I wanted to share tonight. I am currently serving as the Chair for the Wycomico County Education Foundation. Our group's mission is to advocate, promote excellence, and opportunities for all students. In order for our students to achieve excellence and to have those opportunities, we need funding support from the county executive and the county council. I have spoken a few times in recent weeks, asking for your support of the Wycomico County Board of Education's request for the $4 million above-maintenance-of-effort. This money would help cover the inflation costs associated with health insurance, the blueprint mandate, projected life and retirement increases. If the county is not able to meet or provide the money above-maintenance-of-effort, then the Board of Education will absorb these costs, and it would have a huge impact on student services, which takes me to these charts that you have. The first chart, I've got number one on there. This chart shows the Wycomico County Board of Education appropriation as a percent of the total county budget. In 2006, it was 43%, and it's dropped significantly to less than 26%. The second chart, I don't know, you guys can see the decline. So I like visuals, it shows a lot. The second chart shows per pupil funding. Worcester is the highest, paying over $15,000 per pupil, and Wycomico is the second lowest in the state at $3,514. So I'll show you guys this chart. So in red is Wycomico, my second last. Moving on to chart number three, this shows that if you were to meet above-maintenance-of-effort requests, it would increase our cost per pupil by $284. That would allocate our cost per pupil to $3,798 from the $3,514. And again, I'll show you this chart, and Wycomico is in the red. So, I respectfully ask questions for our students of Wycomico County. Is there a way for the county executive and council to find common ground and be able to invest 284 more dollars for our students? Is it possible for you to spend some time to think out of the box and fund part of the $4 million, if not all of it? I know you will be meeting with the Board of Education in a work session in a couple of weeks. Please be open-minded, work with the Board of Education, and find a way to allow our students to achieve excellence and have every opportunity that they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Good evening. My name is John Palmer, and although I'm a member of the school board, I'm here tonight speaking as an individual member of the school board. And as an individual board member, I would like to thank our elected officials and taxpayers for their support through all of this, of our education system. In today's toxic political and economic atmosphere, this can be a real challenge. But I'm optimistic that everything is going to work out fine for our students. The reason why I'm optimistic is because I'm an insider, and I can see all of the many, many, many good things that are going on in our school system, and they are going on. One of the ones I always like to highlight is our faith-based partnerships under the leadership of Dr. George Whitehead. These 30 group members, they work directly with our students. They're like second parents to the students. And they do it out of their heart, and they do it for the children, and they cooperate with one another. I would like to see cooperation amongst all of our elected officials to see if we can overcome any differences for the good of our county and for the students within our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Good evening. I'm Brian Rager, resident of Wycomico County and the Chief Finance and Operation Officer for Wycomico County Public Schools. I'd like to begin by thanking this council for approving above-maintenance-of-effort funding allocation for WCPS last year. This kind of leadership is what's required if we're ever to get close to the level of per-pupil funding that was allocated to our schools a decade and a half ago, before a different council and different executive made the cuts that are still felt to this day. I won't take time to repeat the above MOE requests that you heard from others, as important as they are, but I would like to inform the council and the public of the non-recurring cost requests that were approved by the Maryland State Department of Education. Non-recurring costs allow the council to provide one-time funding for specific projects, and this funding does not reset the base used to calculate maintenance-of-effort for future years. Projects that MSE has approved for consideration as non-recurring costs include building renovation projects, such as completing the enclosure of the open classroom area at Glen Avenue Elementary to include sprinkler installation. Major safety upgrades would be provided to that school. Installation of additional security fencing at Glen Avenue, Fruitland Primary, Pittsville, and Bennett Middle Schools. And interior door and hardware upgrades at Pinehurst and Shipman Elementary Schools. While funding recurring costs is the preferred tactic for promoting long-term sustainability for our school system, should county government wish to dedicate funds to non-recurring costs, the above-mentioned list would provide an opportunity to address some current needs while avoiding an increase in the MOE base for FY 26, and we certainly are ready to work with you on any of these requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rager.
Good evening. Joseph Venosa, Wycomico resident, parent, and taxpayer. So we've heard from the superintendent, we've heard from board members, the board president, we've heard from administrators, so now you're just going to hear from a parent, which I guess means I can be slightly less diplomatic, but hopefully is honest and much more handsome. So, in this discussion about maintenance-of-effort and about sort of the need to go over, you've heard a number, right? 4.1 million. In reality, though, I would implore you to please look at the actual Board of Ed initial request that was made in their initial packet, pages 127 to 128. And the reason I ask you to do that is because, in reality, the true costs of an actual, true funding number would be about 8 million. And here's why. There were roughly, I believe, 45 teaching positions, including, I believe, six ELL positions, right? Those are teachers to help students who are English language learners. Those are put in as unfunded budget requests, and this was largely put in, unfortunately, under the belief that the county executive would simply not fund it, that it wouldn't be a priority. Yet, this is what the Board is stating is needed, meaning they're coming to you cap in hand for half of what really should be. And so when we're talking in these meetings about, you know, this funding issue, this is affecting actual student performance, this is affecting actual student climate. We have a crisis in our schools in the sense that we have a number of students who simply are not able to fully learn the English language because they're coming here as new arrivals and they need that assistance and help. There was a story in today's WMDT posting that said that we have about 7,000 Haitian residents. Many of those families have children in the schools. We owe it to them to become productive citizens of this community, that they learn English. And we can't do that if we don't have personnel. We are investing in our future. I know it's a cliche, but that's a real thing. And whether it's from Y High to the West Side or from Parkside to Pinehurst, all of these schools are operating on the bare bones. Off the record, teachers will tell you, they're barely holding on. And they'll continue to do maximum effort with minimal funding. But I just think we need to have an honest conversation about our priorities. We are sitting on one of the largest reserves we've ever had. We're giving certain personnel $20,000 bonuses. I think we should think about our children a little bit in the context of this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Venosa.
Hello. Ethan Sinsback, Wycomico County resident and ninth-grade English teacher at Parkside High School. I'm going to be incredibly brief, because I don't want to repeat anything that's been said, but specifically with these 45 positions, for me, as an English teacher, looking specifically at these seven EL positions, we desperately need, desperately need, an increase in EL teachers. We have two at Parkside currently, and they do an amazing job, they work so hard every day, but there's only two of them, and they're stretched thin. So, we desperately need these positions, and I would really implore everybody to look at the funding and see what we can do to get more EL teachers and more teachers in general, but specifically looking at this crisis we're having. These more and more students, EL students, are coming in every day. We need support in this area. Thank you.
Christopher Staples, Wycomico County resident. I don't have a horse in the race here, I don't have kids. However, my wife is a speech pathologist, so I also have friends that are teachers in the school districts, both Wycomico and Worcester County. Funding is very lacking in those areas, special needs, whether it be speech pathology, other special needs, or, such as he stated, English learning. So looking at the budget, I kind of looked at everything going through here, and as stated, the increases in some of these salaries are off the boards. Like I said, I don't have a horse in the race. However, three of the underfunded things that I noticed in here, first is public safety with law enforcement. Now, I understand there's a contract, however, if you look at Wycomico County, if you wanted to retain officers, you want to hire good officers, you have to pay a good salary. They're not getting that. They're going elsewhere. Look at Salisbury City, $20,000 sign-on bonuses, other agencies, they're leaving in droves. You can't get good cops anymore. Secondly, your first responders, whether it be firefighters or EMS, there's not people banging down the doors to be firefighters anymore. And to cut their budget or not overfund it is simply something that's going to cause less people to join the fire company. And ultimately, as a taxpayer of Wycomico County, I'm going to fit the bill for it, because you're going to end up with everything being a paid entity, because volunteers are lacking. And it's a past that, if you look across the board, it doesn't matter whether you go from here to California, the volunteer agencies, whether it be fire, EMS, wherever it is, are now paid agencies because the lack of support, the lack of recruiting, and the lack of money. So, your $2 million that you give Salisbury, you might as well look at giving $2 million to every fire company, because that's what they're going to need. So I would highly suggest looking at the education budget, the law enforcement budget, as well as the fire and EMS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staples.
Are there any other public comments?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Mike Dunn. I'm the President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee, here tonight on two matters, and this is one of them. I'm also echoing and... one of them. I'm also echoing and standing here for our friend Bill Chambers from the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. I know you received a letter earlier today from Bill. GSC and the chamber have consistently been behind and in support of coming above maintenance of effort funding. I will look to my friend Michelle Wright and echo her thoughts. We know that there's not maintenance of effort funding in the current budget. We know you have some work sessions to come. Thank you for what you did last year in securing $800-plus thousand above maintenance of effort. Might just ask you again, if we're at zero now, and it looks like 4.1 million, the request of the school board is likely, unlikely? Perhaps there's a number between 0 and 4 million that you, as the council and the executive working together to work on the budget, can make happen. We simply can't make a statement to our teachers and our students and our educators that funding our schools in 2024 at the same level by percentage that we did in 2010 is acceptable. So we just encourage you to do the best you can, as you always do, to try to land somewhere between 0 and 4 million dollars to address the maintenance of effort issue. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
This is my last time, I promise.
Third time's a charm.
Shannon Perdue, Parsonsburg. I'm with the Parsonsburg Volunteer Fire Department as well. I forgot to say that the last time. But I wanted to point out a couple of factors. I wanted to kind of close this financial aspect of this. Out of the positions funded or proposed to be funded, 23 of the positions are actually between 15 and a 27% increase. Five of those are in the finance department. Three of them are in human resources. None of them are at the sheriff's department, the corrections department, nor the state's attorney's office. So I believe that the county should probably really look long and hard at the budget and what we're paying people on the regular. And who gets a 27% increase ever in a salary? I'm not to judge anyone's increase, but I guess I am because who gets that kind of increase at all? And I do find it interesting, I said it before, that five people in the financial, out of only like, there's only like 12, but five of them are all getting an increase 12% or higher. So that definitely should be looked at pretty closely. I do want to thank the council for your time. Thank you for all that you do. We do see that you support all of the agencies, including the fire departments, even though we see what happened with the budget, but we know that you didn't produce the budget. So thank you again. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Monica Brooks. I'm a Wacomiko County resident, and I'm also president of Wacomiko County NAACP. I'm here to also speak about increased budget for our schools. I think, if I'm, as I think about this, the meetings that you set up, the meetings that you have with Superintendent Stauffer, that you all do, I think it's quarterly, I'm not sure how often you all meet, to get the statistics and information, real-time data of what they're having to contend with, and especially the huge increase of immigrant population in our space here and the diversity. I think there's about 60 different languages spoken now in Wacomiko County. It might be more. We have a huge shift in the needs, and the people here are being as flexible as possible to address those needs and try to ensure that every child is adequately addressed, and especially for families. But on top of that, the state of Maryland is still 2,000 teachers short. You know, we're short here, and it would go a long way, not only to assist our school, our school board and our public school system, to not only get this increase, that $4 million. Personally, I would give them more than that. However, this is not something that they are just being willy-nilly about. This is a huge deficit. The mental health alone that they have to address with students, many of these students have to be shipped all the way up to Queen Anne's County to get some of the services that are needed. They are struggling, and that is going to trickle down, and that's going to ultimately affect how our community responds and what happens in the future, the people who are available to work jobs, the people who are available to become entrepreneurs, the people who are available to assist us, right, in the future in these different spaces, all these different areas. So I would and we would, as an organization, like to see the county, seriously, go beyond and really look at the boots on the ground, what's really needed, and when you see that, I believe that you will make a good decision. Once upon a time, the previous administration decided to give millions and millions of dollars to a new sheriff's station. It's like 30-something million dollars, right? Where'd that money come from? So my point is, money can be made available if it's prioritized in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Are there any more public comments? Mr. President, I believe that, oh, we do have one more.
I'm sorry, Ms. R. People just won't let me sit at the meeting and watch and see what's going on. You got to get me up here to talk. Start with a flat funding for the fire companies. It needs to be addressed. Apparently, it's going to be addressed, but the fire chiefs met. The county executive on her executive-exclusive presentation states that all the departments come before with their wish list. Everybody can't get everything they want, but they try to do the best that they can. So it's my understanding, as not being a fire chief, but being associated with many of them, fire chiefs met with the county executive and requested a $53,000 increase in their budget. They were turned down, told it wasn't going to happen, and the budget reflected a flat funding for the fire companies. Well, boy, did it hit the fan with the fire companies in the county. Lo and behold, all of a sudden, it's posted that fire companies don't need to worry about it because they're going to get some money out of the capital budget. So now, the proposal is, that hasn't been made but is being floated, is that the fire companies are going to get $75,000. They only asked for 53. You can ask for what you want, but you're not going to get it. But if you ask for 53 and you feel that's a fair number to get, I'm sure the fire companies will be tickled to death with 53. They'll be ecstatic with 75, but 53 is going to make them happy. I think the council needs to take a little bit, a look and a little more discussion about the funding of Fruitland Primary. I understand the reasoning behind the funding decisions because that was the way they get the funding for the Board of Education, to get the Fruitland Primary School, for the council to do what they did. But possibly, maybe a little more looking needs to be done at it to possibly bonding Fruitland Primary. And instead of taking 20,000 out of the reserves, and maybe let's take 4,000 or 5,000 out of reserves and give them for their maintenance that they're requesting. Let's bond the school and use some of the county's $83 million to get the Board of Ed what they need at a minimum to keep going. Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
I believe that concludes the public comments.
That does conclude the comments. Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody's time they've taken to prepare for it and as well to present it tonight. You know, speaking publicly is not always easy, but we do appreciate what you've done. Everybody did an excellent job. Ms. R.
Okay. Next on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 44-2024. This is to amend Chapter 15, Leave and Holiday Benefits of the Personnel Committee.